I believe that the landscape plan was submitted in...
The landscape plan is submitted. The only comment on a landscape plan is the applicant should add the 10th tree that's shown in their calculations but not actually shown on the plan itself. Would you only change the landscape plan? And that can be submitted for administrative approval, I assume.
It's a little confusing because as the resolution was submitted prior to the landscape plan being submitted, but I didn't want to confuse the issue by, you know. We can live with the resolution as is. It's not a problem.
Do we have a vote, please?
That's my cue, Mr. Chairman. I was asleep with the switch there. Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Congratulations. Look forward to seeing it. Do you know when you're probably going to be opening it?
Maybe around 30 days.
Great.
Spain, New York.
Very good.
But hopefully about 50 days.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Take care.
Next is item 6. A public hearing on conditional rezoning application file number CR-006. Proposed Troy Plaza, west side of Crooks, south of Square Lake at 5500 New King. Section 8 from PUD 13, Planned Unit Development 13, to CB, Community Business, and OM Office Mixed Use Districts.
Do we agree I was going to do this one?
I can do it.
I can do it. We, it's been a long day, Mr. Chairman. Long day. You will recall that this item was before the Planning Commission at the previous study session to discuss the proposed conditional rezoning application with the Planning Commission. We had, the staff prepared a report and with some recommendations and some comments. And the Planning Commission had some comments. We discussed it at length. After the meeting, we had some conversation with a landscape architect from another firm who indicated they were preparing a landscape plan. And the plan that was in the packet that we talked about did not conform with our provisions of our zoning ordinance. And we've also subsequently had revised plans that were submitted to us yesterday. So it's, given the timeliness and the kind of timing and the amount of time that's required for, you know, for our review of the revised plans and the comments, we're proposing that we postpone this item to a future date to allow the landscape plan to be prepared, allow us some time to prepare a report for the Planning Commission. This does however, give us an opportunity, you know, I did want to kind of have a brief discussion with the applicant who's here this evening. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands this is a conditional rezoning application. And if there are any conditions that are being proposed, the site plan in and of itself does serve as conditions. But I do want to make sure that the applicant regarding the potential flexibility for the hotel site, the, I believe the site plan shows like a hotel building on the location that's the westernmost location. But I believe the applicant doesn't want flexibility. If it's not a hotel, maybe it's going to be an office. And I just want to make sure that the stress of the applicant, that that's clarified in the conditional rezoning agreement and on the site plan so that, you know, if flexibility is the goal, then we do get that through the site plan and through the conditional rezoning agreement. If everyone understands that, what we don't want is that, is if the applicant does seek flexibility and it goes through the process with a planning, public hearing by Planning Commission, a public hearing by council, and it's not clear that there's flexibility, it's going to have to come back and go through the whole process again. That needs to be really clarified and made clear.
I agree. I think the site plan and the agreement needs to have some certainty in it, right?
It's only going to benefit the city and the applicant.
Mr. Hudson?
If I may, I mean, this kind of touches upon another item before us tonight in the conditional rezoning. It's been my belief that conditional rezoning was enacted by our state legislature to permit an applicant to erect a structure or do something in a zoned area where there's a great latitude in that zone area to avoid a rezoning which opens up the door to anything permitted within that use. Things satisfy us in a conditional rezoning that this is an appropriate use in the structure for this. That's what conditional rezoning is for. This one before us is almost there, but this word flexibility bothers me a little bit. It looks like they have perhaps on the plan confined it to maybe an office building, maybe a hotel. But the devil's in the details and down the slippery slope. And I'm forecasting that, I'm going to bring this up again later because instead of one or two uses, we're going to have an applicant who is suggesting maybe 30 or 40 uses in the name of flexibility. So I don't want to destroy this thing, but I think just to be consistent in my philosophy of conditional rezoning, I'm going to vote no on this, only because I really believe that if we're going to have a structure, and this is going to be a major intersection and a major development, it's going to be important to be consistent. And I don't want to see a use, and I'm not suggesting to the applicant that that's going to happen, but I think I just want to remain consistent. And that's my feeling on conditional rezonings.
Any other comments?
Hi, everyone.
Mr. Krent?
I brought this up at the last meeting on this item. And it's the, again, the McDonald's traffic flow and actually the entire flow of the project. Let's say I'm a person, and that's going to be a hotel, let's say, the large building. And I come in, let's say after working, I'm in the evening, I drive into the hotel, park in front of the hotel, and I decide, you know what, I see a McDonald's across the parking lot, I think I'll drive over to it. Well, there's no clear way that I can get to that McDonald's as far as I can see because as I'm pulling in and, you know, going back, the same, usually people that are new to an area drive back the same route they came in, they're, as they approach the McDonald's from the north side, it becomes one way they can't get into it. And then, then they say, well, I'm stuck in this little parking thing. And then they, you go south and then you hit this big green band. Well, that means I can't go there. So you're back to the hotel and, you know, scratching your head, how do I get to that McDonald's? I think we can come up somewhat designing this, come up with a little better traffic flow so that it integrates the uses better. That's all I'm saying. I don't have a direct solution for you, but I'd like to see a traffic flow that's absolutely intuitive. You just immediately see something and you can go to it without having to go through a maze to get to it.
Any other comments from the commission?
Not a comment. I think Mr. Hudson has been consistent in his philosophy regarding conditional rezoning. And just for some dialogue, if I may, really briefly with Mr. Hudson. If the applicant for this, in this example or in a future example, were to provide an option A and an option B that were both completed site plans, so if it's A is a hotel and B is an office, and if it is an office that was going to look like this, and if it's...
I agree. There's an A and a B with site plans and the preliminaries done, so we can make that selection. I don't have a problem with flexibility in that regard. But we've got one, we're thinking of 30 or 40 different combinations, and that's a real problem for me. But yeah, certainty and no problem with flexibility. You've got a hotel and you've got maybe an office building. Yeah, if we can see those, either one might work very well.
Does the applicant wish to respond? Then we'll have the public hearing.
Mike Gordon from Moise Gordon Associates Architects. We will take into consideration, and we have already changed, the site plan you see on the board right now has already been modified to some degree. And we've been working with our traffic consultant to try to resolve how to get more landscaping, more green space, a better pedestrian flow. And we've been real conscious working with the landscape architect. As we said, the timing was, this is a rather complicated site. And with, as I said last week, with the holiday hail, heat and humidity, it was quite a challenge to get anything done. So we're looking forward to taking this into consideration. And I think we will come back, and I think it's an excellent idea to have the two plans, office building, hotel.
The McQueen.
Yes. And if there's any other comments and questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions for the district? Mr. Shepke?
No, not really a question, a formal question, but I think that's a great idea in option A or option B. I'm excited to see this developed, especially with McDonald's and these other eating facilities in the area with all the hospital workers and the surrounding buildings. I think they're going to do very well. So I think this is a great idea for this, it's differently configured piece of property. So I think it's a great idea to get this thing developed and the manner in which it's being proposed.
We still have to open the public hearing then, Mr. Savadon? Public hearing is open. Anybody in the audience want to comment on this application? Seeing none, move it back to the commission. Do we want Mr. Savadon?
Just a comment regarding the timing and our request to postpone. This does happen with special use applications because you want to schedule it because there's basically a 30-day lag. So you want to schedule it. You make a bit of a leap of faith. You know, there's complications with the landscape plan, there's the holidays. It kind of, it happens. So, you know, we have scheduled a public hearing, we held the public hearing. Obviously, no one showed up. But I guess it's my way of kind of apologizing for not being able to really take action this evening, but things happen.
Do we need to have a resolution to postpone until such time?
Yes.
As, such time as the applicant has clarified it? Is that the word we want to do, the wording?
It needs to be to either a date specific or an action specific, correct, Ms. Lancaster? I'm going to hand the microphone to the expert here.
Well, it depends. You can table it which time Brent could bring it back, or you can postpone it to a date certain. So I don't know if the applicant prefers one over the other because he's going to be under the time pressure. You want a date certain or...
Well, the next government, we were so close. I haven't even identified.
Then I would...
The modifications, we should be the next.
Date certain would be what he would like.
Yep. We need to have you on.
Date certain.
They have a resolution to postpone until a date certain?
It's the next date certain.
The next date certain would be the 24th of July. That's two weeks. I'd like, Mr. Carlisle, do you think two weeks is a sufficient time?
Again, it goes back to the applicant, how fast they can turn around the plans. There are requirements in the site plan review that have to all be submitted. The entirety of the pack has to be submitted in one complete packet in time for office circulation as well as review. So we would need it probably within a week if possible.
We, yeah, and we don't have the landscape plan yet from Cal Hall.
Right. That's, I think, the major component that's really missing.
If, I can just say one thing to follow up on Brent. What Brent was saying is that we just, we were pushing the applicant to remember that whatever you submit as part of your conditional use, as part of your conditional rezoning, I'm sorry, you're tied to that condition. So the landscape plan and the site plan and the phasing plan, they should all be consistent so that we know exactly what the condition is that you're proposing for approval. So those all should be consistent. That's it. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
24th still?
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn this matter until July 24th, 2012, for another review.
Postpone.
Postpone.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Shepke, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, on the roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you on the 24th. The next item is the Site Condominium Development, item agenda number seven. Preliminary site plan review. Proposed beach view estates. Site condominium, eight units or lots, west side of Beach Road, 1,000 feet south of Long Lake, section 18. Currently zoned R1A, one-family residential district. Mr. Savadon?
And Mr. Chairman, we discussed this at the previous Planning Commission meeting. And the Planning Commission essentially indicated to the petitioner that although they did comply with the provisions of the City of Troy ordinance, they perhaps could, were strongly encouraged to consider just a little bit more creativity in laying out the development. And they were encouraged to investigate the cluster option, which is in the ordinance. And they are doing so as we speak. They're looking into it. They're putting their best foot forward. Now, they're not guaranteeing that they're going to come forward with the cluster development, but I can assure you that I have had a number of conversations with the engineer who was inquiring about our provisions. And they are putting their best foot forward and looking at the possibility of doing the cluster option. Now, whether it works or not, I don't know, and they don't know yet, but they would like a little bit more time to investigate the potential for that. So they asked for postponement this evening.
Did they ask for a date certain?
I think in this instance, we can postpone them until such time that they submit a complete application. If that's tomorrow, then they get on, they're two weeks from, they're at the next meeting. If it takes longer, we can push them back administratively.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a resolution for postponing?
I'll make a resolution that we postpone the item.
Until?
Until the 24th. Is that the...
No, they're asking for an action.
Oh, I'm sorry.
An action.
I'm unfamiliar with it.
Yeah. Well, I...
Go ahead.
I propose that they postpone until we do get a complete site plan from the applicant.
Resolution by Mr. Sanzika? Second by Mr. Shepke?
Sure.
Any further discussion? On the roll call, please.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Item 8 is the rezoning application for file number Z-740. Proposed Charter 1 bank branch, 125 Stevenson Highway, and 1250 West 14 Mile Road, section 35, from O Office to IB Integrated Industrial and Business District. Who's going to take? Mr. Savadon?
This is another item that's a carryover from a previous meeting. It was discussed at the last study session. And we had discussion with the petitioner about, again, this is getting back to the flexibility issue that we talked about. In this instance, what the petitioner seeks is a rezoning to IB Integrated Business, excuse me, Integrated Industrial and Business District. In this instance, it's kind of interesting because the master plan actually calls for IB. So this would be certainly on the face, it would be consistent with the master plan. And we, the staff, did recommend approval, or actually recommended that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this rezoning. Some planning commissioners do have difficulty with the concept of recommending approval of a conditional rezoning without a specific site plan. It's my contention personally, and I totally respect the planning commissioners that feel otherwise. I do understand where they're coming from, but we agree to disagree. My professional opinion, I have no problem with there being flexibility in the, basically the range of uses that are permitted on the property. The challenge with putting together a site plan at this time is that the applicant doesn't have a project. If the applicant had a project or projects to build the site out, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to submit a complete site plan, but at this time they don't. So they seek flexibility. What they've done is they put together a list of uses and other conditions that they'd be willing to voluntarily provide to the city. And that was provided in your agenda packet, it'll be on your laptops. And what Mr. Carlisle did was basically took our table of uses in 4.21 and really kind of isolated the uses that are permitted in IB and went kind of item by item or use by use for those uses that were voluntarily removed from the table by the applicant. And there's some comments that are indicated in the notes column as well. But, so this really kind of summarizes where the applicant is in terms of the range of uses that they're willing to take off the table for the future redevelopment of this parcel.
Any questions for Mr. Savadon?
We're just recommending at this point, aren't we, to City Council?
Yeah, at this point, if you remember, this got a little tricky because we had a public hearing and it didn't go over like I thought it would, which is okay. And the applicant's been more than patient. But I, what we basically said at the meeting was because there was the potential for some relatively significant changes to the application, we would hold another public hearing for the Planning Commission. Just so that any residents who wanted to be, you know, updated on what was going on, we would do that. So I think at this time, what the applicant seeks is kind of a head nod. We don't have to take any action this evening. We do have to have a Planning Commission public hearing. But just want to, we want to kind of vet what's been proposed and then schedule a public hearing and keep the application moving.
Is the applicant there?
Thank you. I want to ditto, I'm sorry. You make it so convenient. It's right here.
We tried.
Good evening. Jason Horton for Lurmax Stern Development Company. I'm glad to be back. I think that what Mr. Savadon said pretty, I would ditto his point, we are in a position we don't have a use. We don't have a user, and we don't have a use. And when Mr. Stern was here with me last week, he indicated that, you know, we needed this, the flexibility of a living level playing field. And we agreed that, you know, notwithstanding the master plan zoning of this, we would be here with a site plan under any circumstances where we had a use. But the need to market the site on a level, on a level playing field is what dominates this. And we would do, we would submit if we had a user, whether it was a regular rezoning, conditional rezoning, PUD, or you name it, we'd be, we'd be all the way there. I'm happy to answer your questions about the list, but there were actually two things that the Planning Commissioners asked for last time for me to provide them. And in addition to the list you had, and that was, what is it you think will happen on this site?
Absolutely.
What is it will be happening on this site? So that, you know what you have in mind, you know what you say you're not going to do, okay? And we know what you say you would like. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Are you missing one? I got two.
Oh. Okay. There'll be one for Mr. Howard. Thank you. Actually, I'm going to do two. The first survey, the first page, one of three depicts exactly what we have out here now and as it shows on that screen in the red area. So there should be no surprise for that. It is a two-story building in the center, a one-story building at the corner. On the second page, I'm presenting our first redevelopment concept. And that would be if we're able to attract a user who wants to use the office building largely for storage or primarily for storage and office second, then there'd be the possibility of adding a building A at the corner. And that building A would be any of the uses potentially that aren't excluded from the uses. It might be a medical building. It could conceivably be an office building, but I doubt it. And it might be a retail store. But it's not a strip center as such. It might be a duplex store within that footprint. The second, the third page shows what happens if we can't make use of that current building, which is a, you know, a significant likelihood, in which case that building would be demolished and the redevelopment concept two, which is in your third and last page, would be the kind of thing here. And you might have a mix and match here between medical, between medical and retail, some office. We just need the flexibility to do this. We would limit all construction to two stories. And of course, every building that would be built there would be subject to site plan review for each time a new building would be proposed. With that, I'll leave it and see if you have any questions and see if I can respond.
Mr. Savadon?
And just a comment, just to clarify, Mr. Horton did submit, and I did email to everybody, and it was placed down in front of you this evening, a list of prohibited uses that is consistent with the uses in the table that Ben prepared. And also other restrictions that they're voluntarily agreeing to adhere to. First, there's three of them. I'll just read them. First, the heights of new buildings shall not exceed two stories. Two, truck deliveries between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM are prohibited. And three, all new structures are subject to all applicable ordinances, site plan requirements, and special use approval.
Anybody want another copy of this?
I think we all have copies.
We all have copies. Good. Good.
Any questions? Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Horton, you missed some of my comments on an earlier item which really pertained to this. And I thought for your benefit, I would kind of repeat my philosophy. And I think I'm probably the only man on the board that I know of who has this philosophy right now. That philosophy of mine is that when conditional rezoning was authorized by our state legislature, that was to permit towns and zoning and planning officials to limit the use of a zoned property to a specific use where some other uses might be inappropriate. The problem I have with the prior one, which I think may be resolved, and yours is being so flexible within this for conditional rezoning, I don't know what I'm buying. It's a pig in a poke, so to speak. So I am probably going to vote no on this, only because there are too many options open and philosophically, I'm opposed to that. Fortunately, I think for you, I'm the only one, and I don't think you're going to have a problem with the rest of this board, and I think you have good intentions, but...
Thank you.
That's my feeling.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I can only say that, you know, the question is, as a developer, I think if all communities had only conditional zonings, I would be the happiest person in the universe because that's the way to do it. And it separates out good developers and separates out bad developers. But if that's not the case, then to have some zoning classifications restrict you when you, other people are unfairly competing because they've all got that classification is what we're up against here. And what, so that is true from our perspective as yours is with yours. But believe me, I'm a big fan of conditional zoning. I started out believing this was just a regular zoning pursuant to the master plan.
Ironically, in your case, you have stricken your permitted uses if you got it rezoned to IB without this conditional. So this is all the philosophical and academic exercise, I think, with you and me on this.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, Mr. Hudson.
Can I please clarify, Mr. Savadon? Is this a conditional rezoning? Because it wasn't labeled, says rezoning.
Yeah, and we'll clarify that. Basically, it was initially submitted as a rezoning and it was determined to kind of, to make it a conditional rezoning. So we need to just, we need to, you're right, we need to make it consistent. Ms. Lancaster just pointed out the same thing to me, so...
Because of the green belt. And that was the reason why.
Mr. Krent?
Just a couple of comments. You mirrored all the negative ones that I would find objectionable to. So your list was right in line with my thinking.
That was coincidental purely, if anybody's guessing.
You know, you picked on the ones that looked objectionable if I were living next door in this neighborhood. And the second thing is, on both of your plans, concept one and two, you've got a large building right near, very close to those residential homes to the west of your development. And I know it's only two stories high, but two stories high may create a shadow into their backyards. It is an east-west, you know, sunrise, sunset. So let's say at sunrise, they may get a shadow in their backyard. I'm just thinking, and again, I realize this is a concept, it's not...
Right.
Real stuff. But I would suggest you move that big building away so that no shadow falls into those backyards.
There's no, not only is that good for the neighbors, that would be the way this plan came. I went to an architect and said simply kind of depict this, not in a formal site plan submission. And I would have centered this, he didn't realize there was a possibility of a two-story building. You always want parking on both sides of you. You always want to do that.
Mr. Shep?
I really like the work that you've done on this. And going through the possible usages, there's a lot of them that I can see that you have crossed out that I had concerns about. Because it is consistent with the master plan, and I agree with you, flexibility... because it is consistent with the master plan, and I agree with you, flexibility is important for us to get some of this commercial property in Troy used, you know, used instead of just standing vacant, or in bringing new money in for the city coffers. I think this is a, this is a great idea. I like the idea that you've got tentative drawings, and I know that you're going to have to bring anything back to the planning commission and have it resolved at the time that there's a specific usage ready for approval. So, I like what you've done, you've been very cooperative with the planning commission. I applaud your efforts, and-
Thank you. I appreciate that, I really do.
I, so far, looking at what you've done in that, and it's in compliance with the master plan, this piece of property, I think, needs to have something done with it. So far, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Mr. Sanzika?
Well, I just wanted to echo Mr. Shepke's remarks, and I have to say, I've dealt with Mr. Horton many, many years ago, and he's a very reputable developer. In fact, we worked on the Palace of Auburn Hills together back-
We did. We both didn't have gray hair then.
Yeah, I know. It was a long time ago.
A long time ago.
But he's a man of his word, and I think he's very reputable, and I believe anything he would do would be first-class, and-
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate that from you.
And it's my pleasure. And I know we have to have, since we're limited on our vote, we only have five members here, we have to have the unanimous vote, so I guess the question is, should we postpone it till the next meeting, or?
Well, I think that was the idea.
Yeah, we actually don't have to take action this evening, it's more of a kind of a head nod type of a, type of a thing tonight, because we did, we did indicate that we would have another public hearing because of the fact that there could be some significant changes, and in this instance, the changes are this list and some other things. So, we'd probably be looking at holding a public hearing at the first available meeting, which would be the second Tuesday in August, to meet the publication requirements.
I just, I just wanted to say that it appears that on page two of this handout that we just received tonight, I think it's about, in the industrial section, I noticed you still left central dry cleaning and laundry plants. Mr. Carlisle?
I'm sorry, Fisher thought, I had another thought I wanted to ask after you were done. Sorry. I'm sorry, Fisher thought I had another question on-
Well, I was just wondering if that should be considered for restriction, too.
I think we've got central dry cleaning, or just dry cleaners and laundries on our prohibited uses. I wouldn't do that no matter whether it was permitted or not, just that's the worst use you can put on a property from an owner's standpoint.
We need to be very careful about what are the permitted uses. You know, you can restrict all you want, but we do need to know what are the permitted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I would just suggest that that one should also be stricken, too, on second page.
So you would-
It's not stricken out, is it?
It's on this year, I believe.
But it's, but it's not striked, striked out on this one.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that one is, so that, I'm going to disadvantage.
I can clarify, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On the list, there's a, there's a dry cleaners and laundry, which is a facility where you or I would take our, and the other one is the central dry cleaning and laundry plant, which is more of a centralized type. So you are correct that, probably an oversight that this was not stricken off, but I believe Mr. Horton just indicated he'd be more than happy to strike that off.
Central dry cleaning.
Slash laundry plants. And I've made note of it, Mr. Horton, and I can, I can let you know with that.
I can promise you, that's not going to be.
Well, I would just urge the commissioners, if there's anything else that you, now that we just received this, and that if there's any other ones, that we get our information to Brad as soon as possible. Mr. Carlisle?
I understand the planning commission's not taking action tonight, but if it would be okay with you, can I just ask a few questions to the applicant, just to clarify, prior to the resubmitment of the next meeting?
Perfect.
On your prohibited use list, there were three uses that was unclear, that I need some clarification on. One, the first one you talk about, there you will not allow heavy manufacturing and assembly. The ordinance does not distinguish between heavy and, for lack of a better term, non-heavy. It just simply says manufacturing and assembly. Are you willing to not allow any manufacturing and assembly?
Well, we didn't want to rule out light, light manufacturing, you know, as opposed to stamping, and vibrating, and muscling things, but I don't see why I can't prohibit it, restrict, it doesn't have to, I don't have to buy the whole loaf, or half the loaf, and the restrictions, I would hope I'd be able to differentiate.
The ordinance simply says manufacturing and assembly, and it does not necessarily distinguish between light and heavy.
No, but can I, can I eliminate that by allowing the other light, light manufacturing to proceed if, should it be?
What would be a similar use in the use list that would qualify for light manufacturing? The problem is if, we can't prohibit a use that's not listed in the use list, and so we need to be-
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I'm just picking from zoning codes that typically say light industrial, heavy industrial districts. That's what I, what I had in mind in terms of what they want. Are you saying that's probably impossible in this?
What I'm saying is, our ordinance simply says manufacturing and assembly. The problem is if you just say heavy manufacturing and assembly, it leaves a little bit up for clarification about what is then deemed non-heavy, and that's not a use that's in our, our use, our, our use list, essentially. What I would ask is maybe you just take a look again at the use list and just clarify exactly if any of the light industrial can qualify under any of these other uses that's in our use list, and come back and meet with staff on that, or let us know.
Potential solution there may be to say, all, all, all manufacturing and assembly uses are prohibited with the exception of A, B, and C. A, B, and C being those three uses that you feel are light enough that they would not be a negative detriment to the neighbors.
Did Mr. Horton receive a copy of this?
Right there, right, around the table, right there.
He did now.
Well, I would just think that it'd be appropriate for him to go through that list.
Let me, let me do that, and-
I have two more, just want to clarify. You note a bus terminal facility as a, we don't have bus facility uses in our ordinance, so I would just remove that as a, as a list, as a use. You do note truck terminal, we do have truck terminal, but there is no bus terminal. You also note no outdoor storage. Are you talking about outdoor storage in general, or are you talking about outdoor storage facility?
We're talking about outdoor storage in general.
Okay. That's fine, that should probably be moved to the other restrictions, it's not necessarily a use in our use list.
Okay, move it down to part two.
Yeah. And one other clarification, are you still proposing the 30-foot green belt?
Yes.
Okay. Is that going to be landscape, or is that just going to be a green belt?
I, there were, I think that we wanted, landscape was the discussion subject to site plan review standards, if I'm not mistaken, is what we talked about. It's just a bigger setback, but it'll be green.
Yeah, I believe, and I have to double check, but I believe the existing wall would negate the requirement for landscaping. So you could, I guess, you could, during a site plan review, you could voluntarily provide additional landscaping, but it would not be required.
That, as a voluntary action, that might alleviate some of the concerns of the adjacent neighbors, subject that the site might lie vacant for some time, you putting some additional landscaping.
Absolutely.
Okay. And one other thing, you did show in both your conceptual one and two, another conceptual, but you did show parking for building pads, A, in that setback, green belt, just so you're aware, the green belt does not allow, would not allow parking.
Yeah, we've, we realize the parking is not plum.
Just want to make sure you're aware of that. Okay.
Thank you.
That concludes my questions.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, then, Mr. Krant?
Just a comment regarding the list of things that are permitted, and again, it's just, it's in our ordinance, and it's, this is under the miscellaneous category at the very end, the very last item, it says production facility multimedia. Now, I understand that production facility would be like a television studio, or something like that, but production facility, a lot of times factories are production facilities. I'm just trying to, I'm just, I'm not, there's nothing to do with you, Mr. Horton.
No, I see Mr. Savin looking for his definitions right, right now.
It's just that, I might, you know, I just, it may be, I just happened to catch it, I just, you know, I mean-
There's a, there's a definition for production facility, comma, multimedia, in the zoning ordinance, and it specifies what that is. Yes.
You would definitely be interested in that.
I was just, I seem to recall the minutes said that we would provide a resolution, or provide those uses that would be allowable, and yet, we're talking about only prohibited.
If I can suggest, just take the reverse, everything that Mr. Horton has suggested he will not use, under the ordinance, everything else, I guess, is permitted.
Right.
That would be the way to go.
So it would be better to say allowed uses except the following prohibited uses.
Right. Does that satisfy you with everyone?
That sounds good.
Okay, if there's no further comment, I think we can, this will be brought back at perhaps the next meeting.
This will be brought back at August, we'll have a public hearing, and we'll make a recommendation.
Thank you.
I think you'll have a full board.
Full board. Hope. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're ready for public comments for items on the current agenda. Seeing no one, we'll move to planning commissioner comments, and let's begin with Mr. Sanzika this evening.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Mr. Shep.
No comments.
Mr. Hudson?
I'd like to represent Mr. Eng to the commission and welcome him for a while. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that he's the student representative for the planning commission. He was at our last meeting, as I recall. Mr. Krant?
Nothing for me.
And I have no comments. Brett?
Did I indicate at the beginning of the meeting that we have a new planning commission member? Ed Kempen was appointed by city council last night, and so he'll be, you'll be seeing him at the next planning commission meeting.
Replacing Mr. Maxwell, right.
Replacing Mr. Maxwell, exactly.
Any further comments? Kathy?
The charter one bank rezoning has been scheduled for July 24th.
Oh, it has. Kathy, Kathy is a step ahead of me as usual, so she took the liberty of scheduling a public hearing two weeks prior to, anyways, good job, Kathy, you're on the ball as usual. Thank you very much for saving the applicant a couple of weeks.
Eric, did you have any comments?
I just had a comment on the second issue that we discussed, the building was going to go into a hotel or potential like restaurants. I think it's a good idea because that area is generally a place where like students go to, especially like the Starbucks and the Coney, Kirby's, Coney Island, the Red Robin, so I think that the restaurants would be a good fit for there.
And even an old senior citizen like me who likes to go there to the Starbucks, too. Thank you. If there are no further comments, this meeting is adjourned.